Okay, it is one o'clock. We will call the planning committee order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would all stand and face the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, underground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to thank you all for attending the meeting. You were all sent the minutes from the August 5th planning commission meeting. At your leisure, unless you have any corrections, I would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll make a vote.
They're second.
I'll second.
All right. Andrew?
Motion on the floor to approve the August 5th, 2024 planning commission meeting minutes. Dick?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion carried, minutes approved.
Second item on the agenda, parking lot variance for number of parking spaces at 123 East South Street. I'll turn the meeting over to you, Andrew. Phil's in here.
Actually, at this time, I think I am going to turn it over to John Oberle with Ice Miller, and he can run through this PowerPoint presentation he made for us.
Okay.
It's only 50 pages, so go quick, right? So, thank you, Mr. Waterson, and we appreciate Mr. Waterson's time throughout this whole process and working with the community. Good afternoon. My name is John Oberle. I'm a partner with the law firm of Ice Miller, LLP. I'm also a township trustee for 19 years. I appreciate your service, and it's really good to be in your community and work with you today. So, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of the commission. With me today from the company, from the applicant, is Faez Aboud, who is the owner of the proposed business in the community, his brother Malik Aboud, and then Amy Rose, who is the property owner and who has had a business in this community for a long time. I've had the pleasure of representing this family in liquor agency stores in Ohio for almost a decade. So, I'm very familiar with their business, who they are as human beings, and what a great opportunity they'll provide for the community. So, today, we want to go through this PowerPoint, because I think it's a little bit... There's been a lot of questions back and forth. We listened to counsel, had some dialogue on this topic. And so, we really wanted to explain for the community why this is the right location, why this variance is appropriate, and a little bit of background on the project. So, if we could go to the next slide, Mr. Waterson. Appreciate it. So, today, I really want to go through the process on how we got here today from the state of Ohio to respectfully request your approval for the variances, go through the experience of the operator, because experience matters, right? It's really important of who is in your community. Are they doing a good job? Are they going to do what they say they're going to do? Talk about our community outreach, the economic impact for the community, and then if this does not move forward, what are the potential impacts? So, with that, I'll go to the next slide. And the reason we're here today is the Rite Aid in the community closed. Rite Aid closed significant amount of stores throughout all of Ohio. And because of that, the state of Ohio had to rebid the liquor agency contract at Rite Aid. And so, because of that, the closest liquor store is 28 miles from Bryan, Ohio. So, what does that mean? People... Your restaurants have to drive out to pick up supply. Your residents have to drive almost 30 miles to pick up, to go to the liquor agency store. And that means jobs and tax revenue has left the community, which we hope we can help you fill. And so, the state released an RFP. They awarded to our client, and it's a very thoughtful process. One, they look at site. They look at parking. They look at everything to make sure it's going to be a great location. But they want to make sure that the business has a likelihood of success. And the family behind me has had significant experience, decades of experience in the business. And another factor, there was lots of bids in the community. A lot of them were denied, because most of Bryan, a lot of Bryan is dry from a liquor standpoint, which means that you cannot conduct sales at a lot of the locations. So, we had to find a site. We knew that this site was wet, and therefore, the sales could come in. So, that was an important factor that we want you to consider. And we think it's also a great location, right? That, you know, where it's located, in the center of town, and next to the Circle K. And we were very careful to reach out to all our neighbors and talk to folks to make sure that, at the suggestion of Mr. Waterson. So, we appreciate that. So, moving on to the next slide, please. So, what we would propose to do at this site is, if we could move, I'm sorry, to the next slide. Thank you, sir. There is currently 21 spots, parking spots at this facility. On the west side of the street, there's currently three parking spots. And you can see the striping going horizontal. We propose to have, to add nine spots there. And we think that's sufficient. That will create the proper overflow that is needed for that site. So, that is an addition that we've worked with Amy and her family and talking with the other tenants. We think that's sufficient. So, next slide, please. But because of that, this plan, we think, will require two variances, two from the city code. And there's a third code that I'll talk about as well. We think this plan complies with it. But in abundance of caution, I want to make sure that I raise it, because we're very transparent in everything that we do. So, if we could move to the next slide, please. So, based on city code 116504, the current code requires 40 spaces, as you can see. So, Staffmark is required to have 10, Little Caesar's 10, and the proposed liquor store 20. And I can tell you liquor agency stores that are, will probably be three times busier in this location do not use 20 spots, right? So, just, and we'll go through some of that. So, the improved parking lot will take us to 27. And importantly, in talking with the city and talking with Staffmark and Little Caesar's, our proposed neighbor, we wanted to anticipate what their needs are, right? It's important. We want to be a good neighbor. We want to be part of the community. We want to also be a good neighbor. And Staffmark is only open Monday through Friday. And they only need eight spaces. So, that is one thing good to know. Little Caesar's has very similar peak hours to our proposed operation. They're only going to need five to eight spaces. And so, the liquor store is a very good fit, because our key op hours are between 4:00 p.m. and 9:00 p.m. and then also on the weekends, generally when Staffmark is not there. So, if all of our businesses would operate at the same time, probably would not be enough spaces. But with the additional six spaces, the continuity of the businesses, we think it works very, very well. So, during non-peak hours, we believe we just need five spots at a time, because most of our customers, like Little Caesar's, Little Caesar's is a grab-and-go, right? It's not a sit-down restaurant. Staffmark is, you know, closed when we have peak hours. Our business, our client's business, you know, who have, I've been in many operations, people come for a couple of minutes at a time. Less than five minutes, they're in and out, right? So, we think, so, non-peak hours will need five. Peak hours, we think that will need a maximum of 10. So, on the next slide, I'd like to kind of summarize where that takes us. So, we think for our location and for Little Caesar's, during peak hours, when Staffmark is closed, we're just going to need 20 spaces. That leaves overflow of, plenty of overflow parking. So, if there is a little bit of rush, but we think that's sufficient. When Staffmark is open, it's going to have great accommodation, because Staffmark will need eight, will need five. And Little Caesar's, at a maximum, will need eight, right? So, that gets us to 21 with six spaces left over for parking. So, we think we've solved for the needs. You know, we've modified the parking plan. We've reached out to our neighbors, and we do think that this will accommodate that. So, thank you, sir. If we could go to the next slide. The next thing that I'd like to highlight is when we added the spaces on the west side of the building, under city code, we're requesting a variance because we need to have a required depth of 20 feet behind the parking spaces. And what our plan is, it just has five, right? But it's not like they're backing into other parking. They're backing up into an alley in an area where there is commonality with Circle K. Now, we've reached out to corporate for Circle K. You know, the Abouds have gone over to Circle K to talk to the manager. Amy is, the property owner, has been very accommodating with Circle K. They currently have an air pump on her property, and that's fine, right? She's being a good neighbor. We want to be a good neighbor. And we think that spacing is appropriate to allow people to back up. And again, we think that is really overflow parking, right? We think in all the plans, there is extra parking available. So, we did want to highlight that for your consideration. Moving on to the next slide, please. So, we, the next part of the law, of the city law, that we wanted to highlight, we think we already comply with it. We don't think we need a variance, but we do want to be transparent and talk it through, where all loading spaces have to be in the same lot served, right? And as you can see, our proposed, our proposed truck traffic, we've got two plans. We've got a truck coming in here, moving here, backing up and staying on our property, unloading to the spot in the back. And we've already contacted a contractor to, you know, put some construction jobs in the community, you know, redo the inside. But they're going to put a beautiful ramp in the back so the unloading can occur. So, we think we comply with the city code there, and we just want to highlight that plan. And most importantly, you know, what is this? Delivery once a week maximum? Less than 30 minutes. And generally, when the state of Ohio will deliver liquor products, spiritus liquor, to this location, it is less than 30 minutes. And they're generally, we believe this is going to be one of the earlier deliveries, and they generally come around 6:00 a.m. in that timeframe, right? So, it's when Staffmark is closed. It's when Little Caesar's is not having customers, when we don't have customers. So, we want to work with you as a good corporate citizen to make sure that when the truck is coming in, it's coming in at convenient hours. So, Mr. Waterson, the next slide, please. We've got a secondary delivery option that I'd like to highlight. If for some reason we need it, and I've had many discussions, I actually drove up here to meet with Mr. Waterson on site, to walk the site, to understand what the concern is. We believe if we needed to, at those early hours, we could pull in off South Street, stop here, and either unload in the front or the back where the yellow is indicated and pull right out. So, what we've tried to do is to put together two scenarios, because we don't want to have congestion, right? Most importantly. And I know some people have asked questions on congestion. We don't think we're going to cause congestion, because the truck is only coming in early hours, right? When the streets are not busy. Secondly, our hours are really generally when Staffmark is closed. So, we think there's going to be a good ebb and flow based on the businesses to not have congestion. And in our experience, in the other stores that the family owns, they have been very, they've been very good with, you know, whether it's security or others, to make sure that we're handling questions. And you have our commitment. If there is any issues that come up, there's no better family than the Aboud family, who will work with the city, work with the engineer, work with planning to make sure that we are doing this the right way. It's important who's in your community. So, if that, with that, I'd like to go to the next slide. And engineer, members of the commission, please interrupt me if you need me to stop or explain something or answer any questions as we go. I'm very, very happy to do so. And so, I'd like to shift into something that I think is very important for the community. Who is in your business matters. Now, the Rite Aid location was a big location that probably, in our mind, didn't fit having just a liquor store there, right? Because it's what, 10,000 square feet, right? Or it's big. It's not sized right. So, what we did was find a site that is sized really well and that is dry. But if you can look at the numbers, Rite Aid numbers, when Rite Aid was in business, they were a great operator, and they conducted their business. They focused on other things, too. So, we believe the sales, the revenue, the jobs are going to be much higher at this location for the community. And we're projecting much higher numbers than Rite Aid. And we are generally conservative in our estimates, right? I've been in a lot of development meetings. A lot of times, people overpromise and underdeliver, right? We want to underpromise and overdeliver for this community. So, there's, I believe, 28 active D permits in the county. And right now, we want to be, they're having to pick up product. And what we really focus on, and if people will allow us to get to know them, we really focus on customer service. When the customers are in the store, they will get the incredible personal service from this family. And the businesses in this community that rely on that, that are driving 28 minutes to pick up product, they will have it delivered, you know, with, once the state approves, wholesale. They will have personal delivery to them. And I think they'll be very pleased with the kind of service that they're going to see by this community. And this family has a history of community involvement in terms of, I've seen it in many communities. We've worked with the mayor. We've worked with council. We've worked with, on local programs or during COVID that we talked about, or you talked about earlier, serving the community and finding ways to give back. So, if we could move to the next slide. So, we'll move quickly through this. We just want you to know that this is not just someone bidding on this project. This is a family who's in the business. They care about the business. They've got a business. Ms. Malik, Faez's brother, has a location in Bowling Green that's really beautiful. They really are part of the community. So, we'll just move through these slides quickly if we can. Just wanted to share. Next slide, please. So, we'll just keep moving through this slide, but we wanted you to see their experience. Look at the number of stores, you know, from State Road, Braggs, Nemo's, Mook's. These are some of the best businesses, liquor agency stores in the state of Ohio, right? They have the best numbers, the best operators. It's a family who cares. So, they've been very, very successful. And I think what you're doing, you'd be bringing in an operator who's going to do the same thing here and pull people into your community for, to, you know, for secondary economic impacts. So, next slide, please. Here's an example of, this is, I believe, the Bowling Green location that just opened up. You know, everything in there is following the state's brand, the colors, the shelving. It is very, very beautiful. It's, they put the money, the time to make sure that it's, it's, you know, working with Amy and, you know, to make sure the investment, the construction jobs, everything is done the right way in the facility. Moving on to the next slide, please. So, just examples of what it could look like. And in talking with Mr. Aboud and his family, they believe this store is going to be even better, right? In terms of the size and the investment and how it's going to look inside. So, moving on to the next slide. Just, next slide, please. So, one of the things that I've touched on earlier, a lot of people come in or in your community that have businesses, right? It's very important, you know, as a township trustee, you know, I'm involved in my community. It's, if the community doesn't succeed, the businesses don't succeed in your community. And it's very important that, when I do work with this family, that they really care about giving back to the community, working with council, working with the mayor, finding out what are the key priorities in the community and how can they be involved. So, these are examples that we've done. They're also involved in alcohol education, too, public education, right? It's important. You know, you've got to control, you've got a substance, you know, spiritus liquor. You've got to make sure that you have somebody who are watching for underage sales, right? Who is working with law enforcement. I think I saw some law enforcement in here earlier. Yes, thank you for your service. You know, working with law enforcement, that this is not just an operation doing other businesses. This is someone who's really watching for underage sales and doing it the right way in the community. So, next slide, just wanted to provide some examples. And then, we've got letters of support as well. We wanted to make sure that if we are going to be neighbors with Little Caesar's and neighbors with Staffmark, that we've reached out to them. And we did. And they, you can see in your packets, they provided letters of support for us to be here. So, I think they think we're going to be a compatible use. They think we're going to drive business. I think the Circle K will see more gas revenue, right? Because people coming in from Henry County or neighboring counties, right? Will come in and stop at your restaurants. So, just moving through, the support letters are there. And then, this last point that I, we have, well, it's not the second to last. We do think, you know, this is not, you know, a huge farm job or a job that's going to create huge revenue for the community, but it is going to make a difference. They are, they pay good wages. They are going to hire locals. They are going to be very involved in the community. And there'll be, you know, increased property tax from construction. There'll be increased income tax, secondary economic impacts. So, we think this will have a good spot. So, and then, moving on to the last slide, if I could. One of, you know, it's important to understand, and I think the reason I put this in here is because, suggested that it be put in here is because, you know, listening to council and other people looking at this, if this site is not successful at the time, the state of Ohio will not allow us just to say, hey, if this location doesn't work, you can go ahead and move. That's just not how, the way it works. Unfortunately, it would mean that the state of Ohio, I think this bid was, came out in...
January.
In January. And it's, you know, and here we are in September. It would have to then stop, be rebid, and they would have to find another site. It would have to go through a whole competitive process again. And what, if this site doesn't work, then there's going to be, a lot of the locations in the city are dry, right? So, if for some reason they award it, I think the filing deadline under election law for the next, it would have to go on the next ballot, which I think is May of 2025. But it would have to be awarded by February with all approvals to make it to the ballot in 2025. That's stretching it, right? Based on a rebid. So, you could see that if a site is picked that is dry, that this store could not be, may not be operational until 2026, right? And people are leaving the city. And look, we understand that people are driving out of the, driving to another county, to Defiance County or another county. Restaurants have to drive out. Residents have to drive out. We understand, you know, we were kind enough to be given a copy of some concerns by the locals. And I get it. I'm sure you've seen on a lot of projects that come here, you know, people have questions, right? And the thing that I would say to anybody in the audience or anybody who is on this, we understand your concerns. We'll take care of your concerns, right? We will be a good corporate citizen. If the concern is traffic, we'll work to mitigate that. We will work with the deliveries to make sure they're in a time that's not going to be congested. So, we think the parking is more than adequate. I think either peak or non-peak, there's plenty of parking spots based on the usage, right? And we're very appreciative of Amy Rose driving in, the landowner, making sure she believes in this project. She believes in the end use. And so, our commitment is to work with you. We'll come back yearly if you want us to. If you want to give us a conditional use or just say, hey, come back, right? We want to come back and see, how are we doing at your firm now, right? Is this working? And so, we put a lot of time into this, you know, a lot of resources. But with that said, we understand that, you know, there may be questions, but we'll address it. And we just want to thank you for your thoughtful consideration of this. Mayor, thank you for your staff's time, Mr. Waterson. He's been amazing to work with and be very, 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 very kind with his time. He met me on a Saturday so we could walk the site together. So, it was very appreciative of his time. With that, I'll conclude our presentation. Happy to answer any questions. If you have any questions from the owners, from the owner of the building, let us know what questions you have so we can address them.
Yeah, I've got a couple. Andy, if you go back to slide, maybe 10 or 11, we're at the semi on the west side of the building. Just one thing to note. You're asking for reduction to 27 parking spaces. It actually should be 26, because you have handicap spots on that site.
Okay.
So, you're going to have to add a handicap spot or two based on code, and then you're going to have to lose a spot for the van, sorry.
Okay.
So, just irrelevant in one way or the other.
Yeah, thank you.
Really looking at 26 spaces and 27.
Okay.
Instead of 27, because there is no handicap accessibility.
Okay.
Okay, go to the next slide, actually, first, Andy. And just a question I have. You were talking about parking, where you showed the parking on the west side. Maybe there's a couple more after that. Where you showed the extra 10 spots. And okay, so you're asking for a relief of 20 foot down to 5 foot, which I don't have a problem with. There's ample room there, but I don't have the authority to give you permission to go on Circle K's parking lot for maneuverability. And we both know 5 foot is not enough room to get a knee-to-nine-foot wide vehicle in there. So, do you have any thoughts on that or suggestion? Or have you reached out to Circle K to potentially get an ingress, egress easement? And I'm just, you're an attorney, so you would know you might need that. So, just out of curiosity.
And maybe that could be a condition, right? That we can talk to them about it. But, you know, what are things, can I, do you mind if I walk over here real quick?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, just so. It's a great question, right? I mean, as I said, we really need to be a good resident. I mean, a good, so Circle K is currently using the air pump right here, right? Their customers are coming over onto Amy's property.
Yeah, I think there's recorded easement on that. I did see on that.
Sir? Okay.
Yeah, there, I looked, there it is.
Okay. We didn't see, okay. So, but that's, I mean, but that's happening. I think the landlord willing to work with them. They're using this property all the time, right? And I think, you know, we've reached out to corporate. Mr. Waterson was kind enough to give me a number. I, and then we walked over there. I walked over there to talk to a manager. I know, I believe Malik walked over and talked to a manager. We're happy to talk to them. And then, you know, if we needed to, you know, if we needed to shift on an angle, right? If that, that's also an option, right? We could, we could figure it out. But I think that's workable.
Right, and personally, I don't really care. I mean, I have driven in there and utilized both parking places for both areas for maneuverability. But what if Circle K puts a fence up? You don't have the room to do it. So, just a question. I'm, it's, you know, just a small red flag.
And it's a good point. And I don't think it's in their interest to put a fence up because of the
Could agree with you more.
But, but we're, you know, again, what you'll find with us is, you know, we'll go above and beyond to work with our, our neighbors to find an accommodation.
And go back to the semi, then, Andrew.
If I can, I'd like to comment while this slide is up. See this truck right here?
Yes, sir.
I know in the past, they did park like this over there. And the complaint we were receiving is people could not get out then when Circle K was having a delivery or if their gas truck was unloading fuel right here. Those people were trapped. Just pointing that out that we have received calls like that in the past.
Right, correct. And what we, can I, do you mind if I address that? Thank you, engineer. It's a great point. And so, what we would do, we would have SOPs, standard operating procedures, right? To make sure we address those concerns. Because if this truck is here, it's probably not here long, right? And if that truck is here, we could use this way to get in for the deliveries, right? We've got a backup plan. And then, we could, what we would also do, we would put no, we've got no parking signs, like cones that we could put up as part of our procedures in, in the, you know, if that was needed short term. And, and the reason I say that is the, you know, this was designed, we think there's, there's six or approximately six. There's always going to be an overflow, right, of, of extra. So, for, for the short period of time that a truck is there, those spots, we, we could put cones up. We could, we could, we could address that, right?
I think, I think his question is reverse. The customer is sitting in that parking stall. And Circle K potato chip delivery truck has them locked in. I think that's what his question is reverse.
Yeah, yeah. So, what we would do is try to educate our customers to use the other spots first, right?
Try to get the employees to park over there.
Try, try to get the employees to park over there, right? And use the, use that. So, I, I think it's, it's a circumstances that, that it's probably, you know, it's a fantastic question. I think that it's a very rare that it would occur. And then, it's, it's just being a good neighbor and, and over-communicating, right? So, if a driver is there and we've got our employees parking over there, I think that's probably the best solution. But if, if there's, you know, we'll come back, right? We'll come back a year from now and give you, we'd love to come back, you know? And, you know, I wish I could, my daughter's place supports up here, so I gotta come back and coordinate it better, right? But if, if, if that doesn't occur, I'd love to come back and give you an update. How, how are we looking a year from now, right? What are we doing in the community? How is this looking? That would be, that would be a joy of ours to come back and, and share, share an update.
Okay, and then back to the semi slide.
One more question. With this parking, I know I've dealt with Amy and I've met a contractor out there before. Were they, is that going all the way to the building then? Or utilizing what's there now? Because I remember at one time, I met a contractor out there about extending the parking to the building. Because there's like a six, eight foot.
So, that's utilizing what's there right now. And there is a, a big green space. We could always push it further that way. You're right. It's, I think it's like about six, eight feet. So, it's like a brass and gravel. And I can speak with the, with the contractor about that because we've already, you know, received quotes for the seven foot wide path in the back, cement path, that the deliveries would utilize. So, I mean, that's another option is to push the parking towards the building. And then, I mean, I mean, yeah, you're talking about another six to eight feet more this way.
And that, if I could speak to that, I think that's an excellent point. If, if, if there is a problem and we had to do that, right? That would solve for the other issue, right? The, of the backing, the backing up, right? So, that could be, that could be a, a great consideration.
I think we met out there, Andrew. Wasn't there great issues? The parking lot was higher than the building finished floor?
Yeah.
We're still going to come back and leave retaining wall a couple feet back and deal with some trainings. Not, not insurmountable. But it, we can't just pave right up to the building because I believe the parking lot was about a foot higher or substantially higher than the building itself. So, I said not insurmountable at all. But I do recall meeting that. So, when you're trying to back a semi in, I know I had asked Andrew to ask you guys if you could provide me with what's called an auto turn simulation, which engineers have software to take in place of 40 foot or 53 foot semi in there and make this, follow the path of where this vehicle goes. And we require that on a lot of intersections if there's a major commercial development or something like that. Now, I downloaded the software and I only had the trial version, which was just a 20 foot truck with a 24 foot trailer, like a, like a pickup full trailer. And out on South Street, there's a fenced in area that Ohio Gas Company has, I think, some valving or there's something in there that's fenced in. And there's also two large 69,000 KVA lines, I believe, power poles right there. Between that power pole and that fence and your property line is only about 12 feet. Now, I, I'm a farmer. I drive a semi. I don't know if I could back my semi in there and stay on, completely on your property. And again, going back to, I, I think you should consider trying to get some type of an easement from Circle K. And it's, it's not a deal breaker to me, but I just, these are the small red flags I see that, yeah, you say the truck can back in there, but I don't know that I could back my truck in there and stay completely on their property. And that's why this auto turn simulation I did with a smaller truck, it couldn't make the turn and stay completely on their property.
Have you seen some other examples? Any other examples? Like We've seen, I mean, we've seen DHLs, the, the contract company from the state of Ohio. They do the deliveries. But I think there's a history of them backing up and having
They do it a lot. I mean, they do it at the new store in Bowling Green. We have a store in Cleveland, State Road Beverage, where they actually back in the intersection and have to pull in.
Right. It takes some jockeying to get it out there.
Yeah.
So, it's, yeah.
And again, if you're staying on your own property. And I don't care personally if you're on Circle K's property, but I don't have the authority to tell you if you can get on their property with your truck. So, that's, my concern is our plan and mission here, you know, there's a lot of, you know, we can make it work by doing this, but are we allowed to?
And that's why, sir, we, we kind of gave you a, a second option as well, right? In terms of how we do it, right?
I saw that. I, that's, if it's a box truck, yeah, I can make it with a semi. I don't know that you can make it in there and make that turn without hitting the gas company and the power poles and whatnot. It's going to be tough. And I know it's after hours. There's no legal part there. There's a lot more room to maneuver. But my, my main concern is just trying to stay on your property. And I don't know how you're going to be able to do that.
Yeah, okay.
So, again, it's not a mountain we can't overcome. But I just, I had that question. Any other questions from the line, before we open up the floor?
I have one really quick.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, John, first of all, thank you for the PowerPoint. I think that was really helpful for me to look through this morning. There's been some question and conversation about how our vendors, you know, the restaurant owners, the bars, that the 28 that you referred to in Williams County, how they're going to get their deliveries? Because there was a discussion initially about maybe a sidewalk path in the back and then hand carting it out. Is that, and then, and then you mentioned something about personal delivery. So, I'm, I'm not sure where.
So, the way we do it at our other stores, we offer delivery to all our bars and restaurants that have accounts with us. So, I mean, we take it directly to that. They don't come in.
Do you have a set extra charge for that?
It's, it just depends. I mean, if it's far away, usually we charge $10. If it's close, we don't charge anything. That's how we do it at our other stores. And then, they, they're always welcome to pick it up. If they were to pick it up, I mean, they would just park like a regular customer in the front. We'd bring it out to their car, load it in their car, and it would be done.
So, the whole, the back sidewalk piece is maybe not part of the discussion anymore?
No, no, that, no, the, the back sidewalk is for our deliveries. For when we get in our liquor and our beer or wine.
So, if your truck semi is backing in?
Yes, yes.
That was what the ramp would be for? Not necessarily for our local vendors?
So, would your local vendors utilize the front door then for their shipments or the back door?
They would just come into the front door. That's how we handle it at our other stores. Because usually, it's not more than a case or two, three cases. You know, we put it on a, two, on a dolly and we bring it right out to their car.
And customer services, it's a great question. It's very important, right? So, I think because of the, the current, the current businesses in the community, they're having to drive to pick up, right? They're having to drive far. I think a majority are going to opt to have it delivered to them, right? So, I think, I think that'll be really helpful to their businesses because they won't have, they, they won't have to send somebody in a car or worry about breakage or, 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 or anything. They'll just, they'll just make a phone call or order, order it and we can deliver it to their properties, so.
Tyson, you got a question then?
That was my question.
Well, because we have this list of the wholesalers that are against it. I guess, knowing that, are you still against it?
Well, I, I, you know, I looked at that and I don't really understand, I guess, their concern, so.
I think picking up in all the congestion
It's congestion.
Is their concern.
But I don't think there would be, I don't know what congestion, I guess.
I do have a concern. I'm, sir, if you want to come up to the podium and I would prefer just to sit and ask questions because I would like this gentleman to answer that for me.
I know, but we need you on the microphone for
What about him?
I'm sorry.
Sorry, I apologize. Next time, could you come up?
Just state what business you're associated with, that's fine.
My name is Patrick Thorpe. I am the administrator of the Montpelier Muslaj. We do a wholesale business, or we buy a lot of wholesale. We currently go to Defiance to have that done. We did it at Rite Aid here. At both locations, I've been able to back my car up to the door and been within 10 to 15 feet of where we got our deliveries or what I picked up, which is not one or two cases. It's generally eight or nine cases every couple weeks. And, you know, doing that in, carrying something a long way is tough enough. Doing it in January, February, I'm under the impression, now, I, I have to be sure that when I come over, that your spaces in front of your building are available. Or where do I go?
Well
Yep, please.
I'm sorry. And I, I don't mean to be flippant. It's just
There's two things I can assure you. Number one is you'll never load your own
Okay.
purchases into the car. We'll bring it out to you. We'll load it. Number two is where's your business located?
It's located in Montpelier. So, I'm under the impression that this is the liquor store for the entire county, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, Montpelier is the next, it is the next community to the north.
So, if you'd like, it would be $10. We can deliver for you anytime you want.
$10.
$10, flat fee.
In perpetuity, forever.
Forever, yes.
Okay.
And we can get that in writing?
Yes. It's on the record.
I was going to say, we do have it on recording now.
Honestly, I'm sorry. Honestly, to me, this whole thing doesn't make sense because, okay, for example, I was in Defiance on, recently on a Friday. Went in, got my wholesale, backed right up to their door. They loaded it for me. Secured my stuff. Went in to get my own stuff. It was 3:15 in the afternoon. When I went in, there was hardly anybody there. When I went in and did my own stuff, five minutes later, now I'm the 12th person in line. How does that, and that's, that's 3:15 on a Friday? How do you, where are you going to put that parking? In an intersection that's already incredibly congested?
Well, you know, I can't speak to how Defiance runs their business because I'm not there. I don't know how many cash registers they have running. I don't know on a Friday, how many employees they have. I mean, how many registers do they have?
Two.
Two? I mean, that's not a lot, you know? We have four registers going in on a Friday, Saturday. We run four or five cash registers at our stores.
At the same time?
Yes. To make sure people don't have to wait. So, I mean, it's, you know, it just all goes down to how people run their businesses. It doesn't have to do with, you know? Yeah. Okay. And I invite you, if you're at Bowling Green, please stop by. It's called Cora's. I'll give you the address.
Hey, we have a restaurant in Cora's here too.
That's a star's name.
If I could add to that. Look, what, one, thank you for, for coming. And thank you for sharing your concerns because as, as a future business in your community, we need to know what your concerns are, right? And I think you've heard us say on the record that we deliver, right? That they'll bring it out to the car. You know, I believe you're going to get much better service than you're getting now. It'll be more, hopefully more convenient for you. And, and that, that is on the record, right? So, what we would like to do is, you know, if you want to talk after this meeting, you know, we're happy to do a call with you. We're happy to take you through Bowling Green, whatever you want. We, we, you are a customer, right? You will be, you will be a customer and you will be treated like a customer, right? And it won't be that you have to come pick it up and you'll have to walk in. You'll be treated like a customer. You'll have the option to have it delivered. And then, you'll also have the option to, to come there, call ahead and say, hey, I'm coming. Here's my order. And we'll bring it out to you, bring it out to you, right? So, I think what, what, it's very helpful for us to know of that letter, of those concerns, because we're here to be, for everyone to get educated, right? And I think what, what our plan of response is, is the, the businesses in this community are going to get better service. And that is, that is what we strive for.
I, I just want to add some, I mean, to, to go to Mr. Thorpe's point, I mean, that's something that has been the concern of many people that I've spoke to since this hit the paper, actually. And initially, it was my concern right off. So, it's not, it's not the fact that they're putting a, a business in our town. I understand the economic impact to it. And quite honestly, the location's probably going to be a goldmine. I have no doubt about that. But it's just the congestion. So, we live in this community. We see it on a daily basis. And there's times that I can't even believe what's going on in that intersection, what's going on in Circle K, getting in and out of there. You add the slope, the easement situation, the deliveries in that location. I do find it hard that a truck could actually get in and out of there, backing in without hitting anything. And then, you can't help Joe Public getting in and out of there and watching what's going on as well. So, my concern has always been what people have talked to me about. And I can't, it's something that I've complained about being there. You got the coffee shop on the other side. Little Caesar's can be crazy. And I've seen Circle K just madness. And I truthfully, I try to stay out of that area just because it's, it's too much of a chore to get in and out. And I think adding the liquor store to that location is just going to make it worse. So, I, I have the same concern that Mr. Thorpe had. And I don't think that there's anything that you can do to, to make it something that I could buy into and still complain about the thing. So, I have objections to the actual location just specifically based upon the congestion and traffic and then people getting in and out of there.
Can I speak to?
Sure.
Sorry, John. I mean, I'm sure, are you familiar with Bowling Green?
Not, not your location, though.
If you go down there, the store's located on Napoleon and Main Street. And it's a fairly busy intersection. There's other businesses there. Our business there, there are 19 parking spaces in the front and an additional 10 behind the building. And I'll tell you this, we have never used the 10 in the rear. And there has never been a time where the 19 in the front have all been used or has been full. There is a ton of traffic on that intersection. I mean, if you watch people coming from, from east on Napoleon, getting to Main Street, I mean, it's just, it's always, there's lots. And this hasn't, there haven't been any issues. It hasn't caused
What other businesses are around you right there at location? Or is it just you in that building?
That building is just us. But there are, I mean, there's tons of businesses in that area. Right on that intersection of a Big Lots, there was a Rite Aid that just recently closed. Across the street, there's a place called South Side Six. It's a famous gyro restaurant place. It's always busy. I mean, there's, I, I mean, it's just a very, very busy intersection.
Just for comparison, do you roughly know what your sales were down there in comparison to Bryan?
So, I don't think that store's gonna do probably about two and a half million. It, it's much busier than Bryan. I mean, the, you know, Bowling Green has almost like 28, it's 18,000 students, a regular population of 28,000, so Bryan's 8,000. It's, I believe, I, I don't think it's, yeah, it's not even gonna be close, you know? So, yeah.
This lady.
Okay, can I have another question?
Do. Um, my name is Danielle. I live back on Fairview Drive, which is in Meadowstark Edition. I'm not against your business coming in. I used to work at Rite Aid after high school for three years. It brings a lot of revenue, but I don't think that's the right spot for it. As someone who lives in that street, I can tell you, South Street is very, very congested, and when your truck's coming in, you're gonna have people getting right behind that truck. They're not gonna let them in. They don't care. Big B, they get accidents because people don't know how to follow the sign that says turn left only. They still try to go the opposite direction. Circle K is very busy in the morning, and I've seen Little Caesar's have lines up to the road. With that, again, like the gentleman said, here, and with Rite Aid, I've seen two or three, five vendors come in at a time. Are you gonna have the spaces for them? Because not all of them are gonna utilize their delivery, and they're gonna wanna come get their liquor themselves, because that's just how they've done it. That's how they wanna do it. So, you're gonna have not a lot of space, and again, like they said, with that gas truck there, or the delivery trucks and that, you're gonna have customers complaining to you guys. It's a really terrible location for a liquor store. I'm aware of the revenue that comes in with it, but that location is gonna be a nightmare, and especially someone who lives down that road. To get where I live, you have to travel down to South Street to get to that area. It is a highly trafficked area, and it's between when work gets out the factories, and when work gets out after the factories, and then even sporting events and everything. That is just, uh, just an awful spot for it. I, again, I appreciate the revenue you guys wanna bring in, but I would pick a totally different location, because it's just gonna be a big issue, and I can, we get accidents there anyway. It's just gonna make, create more, so.
Thank you.
Wouldn't mind seeing some kind of report showing what kind of accidents we've had in here.
I mean, just to address those concerns, oh.
She has to go to work. I have to get going here, so.
Oh, okay.
But everyone else, I'm sure, will listen.
Yeah. I mean, just to address those concerns, I, you know, businesses wanna be in heavy traffic areas. That's the purpose. And, you know, here, we were limited a little bit when we were completing the bid, because a lot of Bryan is dry. Um, so you have to be in an area where the store can go. Um, it's not a, sort of not a question of, oh, we can just pick wherever we like. You know, it doesn't work that way. Um, I can tell you, in our, we met DHL, who delivers the liquor for the state. So, in our initial discussions, we will be the first delivery of the day, which occurs at 6:00 in the morning. Um, you know, and we have that at a few of our stores in Cleveland, that early morning, you know, typically, you know, obviously, I've never been on the intersection at 6:00 in the morning, but typically, in general, there isn't much traffic on the road at 6:00. Yeah, and, you know, these trucks, they unload by the pallet. The store will receive two to three pallets a week. It takes 10 minutes to scan in a pallet. That's it. You know, they, scan guns, the truck will be out of there within half an hour. Um, so I, you know, I understand there are concerns. Um, and, you know, in Bowling Green, which is much, we have never had more than 10 customers at a time in the store. 10, 12. It's just, you know, we're open long hours, people come in throughout the day, it's, you know.
I think some of that is that there's a lot more choices for people to go get their liquor, probably, in that area.
Well, there's one other store. That's Kroger, on the north end of Bowling Green. And then that's it for probably all the way up to Perrysburg. So, probably, what, about 15, 20 miles?
Okay.
Uh, north. Um, but, yeah.
Okay. Ms. Maynor, you have something to add? And I actually have a question for you, if I may.
Oh, no.
Um, being a local business, do you think you would participate in the free delivery? Or would you prefer to get it by hand? I'm just curious. If I can ask that, if you don't answer.
Yeah, no, I don't care. Um, my name is Teresa. I own Cora Brew House and Wine Bar. It's downtown on the square, local, um, place. I understand the whole wet and dry thing. There's, we're dry on Sunday, so, yeah, that's, um, I don't know. We've always, I don't think so, but if I have to, from here, I would. Um, I guess, I wanted to bring up a couple of things, because as I'm listening to all of this. Um, one thing is that you keep talking about it's only the liquor trucks, but I'm sure you're gonna have Heidelberg deliver wine, and, uh, you know, you have all the beer people that are coming in. So, I know I get deliveries, and they're all during the day. I mean, 11 o'clock, all those trucks are coming through the whole day. It's not just in the morning at 6:00 AM, when Big B Coffee's open.
May I? I, I don't generally agree with you. Um, we, Heidelberg, you can set up your days of the week for deliveries with them, okay? Uh, we have a store in Cleveland. We receive all our deliveries from Heidelberg, Budweiser, everybody that come before 7:00 in the morning. Because of our parking lot. I mean, you can set it up with them. They're not, they don't say, well, this is the only time we're gonna deliver to you. You know, you can work with them, and they work with you to deliver the deliveries. So, our intention is to work with them to make sure they're in the morning.
Okay. Well, I did, the only thing, I mean, I'm thrilled that, you know, I really am. And that's not anything, it's just that I don't want, you know, you guys to have the impression it's one truck, 'cause it's not. There's probably five or six trucks, right?
Well, I don't know who the distributors for what are. Like, in Bowling Green, I think we have three beer, two wines, and five trucks, yeah.
Right, plus the liquor truck.
Yeah, plus the liquor.
Okay, yeah. Um, and then for us, I mean, we come, and I would guess, and I, I'm just one of the people that signed, and I know the other bar owners that signed that, and I think part of it is the congestion of that we know that these trucks are there, and Big B Coffee is open right there, which has been accidents, and then we do have to pull up our car.
But one thing, I don't understand, I mean, all these companies only deliver once a week, right? So, it's not like you're gonna have trucks there all day long, okay?
No, but it's, like, there isn't parking on, you know, and I drove by there, too, when I, before I came here, to see what the area is. And as somebody who's a woman-owned business, you know, I didn't, I didn't know you had delivery offered. I don't think anybody knew that, you know, when they signed those petitions. So, I think our concern was, you know, right now, like, at, in Defiance, we do literally back right up to the door, and you don't have to go very far. And in the winter, I think that that's a good point. Like, I don't wanna be a woman trying to carry, I mean, I hate to say that, I'm just saying, but that's, we have a lot of women that work for me that go down and pick it up, and, um, you know, that's a concern. So, if it's for sure that you're gonna haul all of it and deliver, you know, even if we have to pull up, you know, I just wanna, that's, what the biggest issue is, you know, us loading. And I mean, like, the Defiance store, I think, when they took over for Williams County, they got 125 new businesses, uh, wholesale people picking up.
No. Well, I, I know how many Rite Aid had. They only did about 400,000 a year in wholesale sales, so it's.
Well, he got other counties and stuff, I mean, so it's not.
Oh, well, he was sent to other Rite Aids in other counties. Yeah, there was, in this side of the state, there was probably about seven Rite Aids that shut down, so.
Right, so it's a lot of things going, so it's, you know, I mean, I just want you, like, could be, and I know that you're experienced in it, I just, that we're a small town, and that's very congested, and, you know, we just wanna make, I guess.
And I think one thing.
We're concerned about it, that's all.
'Cause I'd actually reached out to Mrs. Maynor, just to ask some questions, because I knew that she was one that was going to Defiance, and it was, you know, when do you typically go? She typically goes at 10:00 AM. So, if you have other vendors that are coming at 10:00 AM, just knock the delivery to the side right now, 'cause that wasn't information I had.
Right.
That kinda conflicts with the whole Staff Mark won't be open during the, the major time. I know that timeframe you were referring to was more so, um, for people that are just coming in to buy their own personal. Um, so I, I know that's where the data was coming from, but when we talk about our vendors coming in Monday through Friday at 10:00 AM, 11:00 AM, there, there is gonna be
Yeah.
some basic traffic in that area, not just with your building. And I did actually, not as the mayor, sit on this zoning commission back when Little Caesar's came. And honestly, the engineer has still not forgiven me for voting for that variance. I promise you, I hear about it once a week, but.
Once a month.
Okay. But, but what I'm saying is, we've already, as a commission, and some of you weren't on, and some of you were, we kind of already bet with that business and that building to accommodate for Circle K. It has caused us some heartache over that, and so the concern we have locally is, are we adding more of a problem to an area that's already somewhat a problem that we had already kind of acquiesced to? How many years, do you remember how many years ago that was, either of you?
10, probably.
It's been eight to 10, it would be my guess, so.
And, I mean, just so.
Which has, unfortunately, nothing to do with you or your business model, like, that is, I hope that all these conversations are not ones you're taking personal.
No, no, no.
We totally believe that you would run a excellent business. For us, it's the already congested concerning traffic.
Just so you know, I mean, Rite Aid only had about 20 active wholesale accounts. It wasn't.
Yeah, oh, I know, yeah.
Yeah.
Which is very small.
Right.
But I could back right up to the door.
I'm ready.
To the back door, right?
To the back door.
So, then.
Yeah.
I did have a question about deliveries. Is there, what's the timeframe on that? Is my understanding, you gotta go through, you gotta get approval through Liquor Control for that?
For you to be able to deliver product to the businesses?
No, I think if you have wholesale, you're allowed to deliver. The deliveries that the state has approved, that everybody's waiting on, are like deliveries to homes. Like, you know, a customer ordered a order.
I thought it was nine months out of the week or something.
So, all of that's in the works statewide.
So, if I order, 'cause we order online now, right? So, we order everything online. How soon someone, you get it to be delivered to my business?
Well, what we would do is set up delivery days and times with them. And, you know, as long as you happen to be in a couple hours before that, we'd be able to get it to you. You know, it's not, yeah.
And then, and then where would you store that truck? Would that be on site?
Well, I mean, it's not a big truck. It's, it's probably, it's, it's a van, size of a minivan, you know, one of those, uh, like a Ram Pro Max.
Okay.
City, that's.
So, it could be towards the back?
Yeah, so it would just need to park, and probably one of the employees would drive it as their personal vehicle that uses it to deliver as well. That's what we usually do.
So, if you open tomorrow, you could deliver to the My Player Moose tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it might take a week or two, 'cause the state has to transfer their account to the store, but yes.
Once you're open.
Yeah. Okay. There's not something where you have to wait nine months for?
Oh, no. No, no, nothing like that.
All right.
I have another question.
Hi, my name is Kathy Poole. I am a business owner. I own Lighthouse Taxes. Um, South Street, that area is so congested already. 6:00 in the morning, it's congested. Trying to get your kids to school off of that. I pick my granddaughter up on Meadow Brook, off of Fairview Drive, and there's times you can't get out. Little Caesar's at times. That line for the drive-up is clear back to the lane you have to drive in to get in to Little Caesar's. I love the idea of the business, and I would love to see your building filled again. I'd love to see a spot in there, I really would. But at times, every parking lot at Circle K is full. They're parking on the side of that building, the Staff Mark building. Three or four people are trying to come out of the gas pumps to get onto East South Street. You cannot turn left. You get traffic that is backed up to almost Cherry Street. And then when Big B Coffee, you're trying to get that traffic, which they're only supposed to turn right, but they do not. They turn left all the time. We see it all the time. And also, when the people decide coming down Main Street, that they're going to turn left into Big B Coffee, also blocks traffic coming off of East South Street, and also West South Street, coming from that direction. There's times, multiple times, I've had to actually go out of my way and around to get down to my daughter's house to pick my granddaughter up and almost be late for school. When the school bus comes down there at 3:00, and I guarantee you that on a Friday and Saturday, yes, Little Caesar's is gonna be busy, the liquor store's gonna be busy, people are getting gas. We're not gonna be able to get in and out of that spot. I love the idea of the liquor store coming back, and like I said, for you, I would love to see your spot filled back up again, but the congestion there is already so bad. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anybody else from the crowd that have any questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Betts?
I don't have, um, a concern, John Betts, um, citizen and member of city council. Uh, my, my issue, I, I certainly understand congestion. I drive bus down there twice a day, off South Street. I understand. I guess my question has to do with the fact that, um, pro versus con, and, um, when you stack it up against the alternative, unless I misheard, I thought I heard that if this is not approved, it's gonna take another nine months to, a year to find another, 'cause you have to go through the reapplication process, which sounds extremely asinine, in my opinion. Uh, you can quote me on that.
No.
Extremely asinine. Um, but that doesn't change their business. Um, if they'd have to go through that again, and what, what would the state liquor even, would they even award it to them? Or would they award it someplace else? So, I guess it's more of a question, concern, that boils down to, so what's the alternative if this is not approved? It's more of a question. It's not like a rhetorical one. It's like just a, a real one. Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Would it be of any value?
So, I think, do either of you have any experience in the dry conversation? Because I'm a little confused on some of the applications that came through, and maybe it was a point scoring for totally other things, but they're, they're already selling alcohol now, so I wouldn't necessarily consider them dry. Um, the, 'cause there were probably five local applicants that reached out to me and said, hey, what's the process? And so I sent it to them, so I know they've applied, um, and I got that verified through. So, it, it was a point-scoring piece, where you guys scored the highest, which is, which is great, but I'm, I'm getting a little confused by the wet/dry conversation, because I know four, four or five of our local applicants already sell alcohol, not liquor. But that's where I was trying to figure out that language for the ballot conversation. Sorry.
So, the wet/dry stat, it's very confusing in Ohio, because after the prohibition, when they wet things up, it was all done by address. So, something can be wet for, let's say, liquor and beer, and dry for wine, or wet for beer and liquor, or wet for, uh, beer and wine and dry for liquor. It's just, and the only way to do it is the state has to pull it themselves, from the Board of Elections, has to, have to review the historical, uh, ballot issues on it, the language, and they make the determination on it. So, it's a very, you know, I wish it was something you could just go online and look up, but it's not that simple. Yeah.
Me, too.
Yeah.
Cora's dry on Sunday.
You know, I know, and there's a lot of places that are dry on Sunday, and to be honest, Rite Aid was dry on Sunday. They didn't open on Sunday for liquor sales either.
And, and the problem is, the state of Ohio may not want to award a place that is dry, right? Because it impacts revenue, and where, the state's gonna wanna maximize their sales, right? And be, be in a location. And if, if something has to get on the ballot, there's no guarantee it's gonna pass, right? Because, uh, a lot of times, you know, it'll have to go on the next election cycle that is authorized.
Honestly, here would be November. We don't have any primaries next year.
You don't have any primary. So, ba- based on that statement, if, if it's a, if it goes to a location that's dry, you're not gonna see sales till 2026, right? Um, and the state, so you're, you know, I think the council member's question is a good one, right? What, what are the outcomes here? If this site is not, uh, if this site is not doable, then you, you're looking at 2026 for, for potential sales, and it may not even pass, right? 'Cause the voters in a precinct may say, hey, we don't want sales here, right? So, there's a lot of unknowns if, if you go to a different location.
I think your biggest issue is the voters in that precinct are gonna weigh the same issues that we're having a hard time getting around, which is the traffic congestion. 'Cause that's their war to vote into.
And what we would respectfully request is give us a chance, right? I think you're dealing with the best operator. You're dealing with people who will be part of your community, and I think we would love to come back, you know, periodically or whatever, and say, how are we doing? And we will work with you on congestion. We will work with the business owners in the room, whether it's Cora's, or the Moose Lodge, or others. We will find a way. We will spend time with you and understand your concerns. And is it delivery? Is it, is it, uh, you know, when you pull up, we'll put it in your, in your van or car for you. So, I, I think we're about solutions, and we would appreciate your consideration.
Let me clarify.
Yes, sir.
In your presentation, did you indicate you would be open to a conditional one-year variance, or, I was not hearing you correctly?
Yeah, I mean, I, we, we haven't talked it through completely, but I, I thought we, we could, we could come back and do a presentation, right? And get, give an overview, right?
I don't know how one-year, how one-year.
Okay, right, okay.
I don't think we have any teeth in it, even.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I don't think I would want to open a business, you know, knowing I might have to close in a year, so.
And that's why we were confused about.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, yeah. Sorry if I wasn't, you know, uh.
So, you, you were saying maybe come back in six months to see if you had, if we have concerns, maybe you can remediate it.
Yeah, 'cause I, I think we can find solutions, right? If there is, if the parking, if, if the parking is not perfect, what changes can we make? One of the things we had, we talked about is whether we could, you know, if, if, if we needed to move it further towards the building, I think that's, that was like six to, to 10 feet, right? What, what more can we do?
Well, the reality of it is, you need parking to get customers. You need customers to stay on.
Yeah.
If you don't have parking, you don't have the customers. You're not gonna stay on, but here, you do everything you can to make the parking situation work. I get that.
Yeah, and, and we're, you know, like, Mr. Booth said, this is not gonna be a two-register location, right? We're gonna have proper staffing, so we'll be able to go out and work with customers, work with, educate them, and, you know, you, um, when you have a, when you have issues that need to be resolved, I think you've got, uh, an owner that's gonna work with you and will be part of the community, be part of the solution.
I, I truly believe what you're saying, and I, I think, I mean, they're gonna do what it takes to make it work and be good to the community and everything that you're talking about, but it's the other people that I'm worried about. It's the congestion that's there, and then you add more to that traffic. If Little Caesar's wasn't there, I literally probably wouldn't have a concern, but it's, it's just the congestion and the people outside of their control. They can't be out there other than giving traffic control, um, you know, hiring somebody on staff to do those things, and that's, that's what my concern is, so.
Kevin, when, when you had your business there, what issues did you have there with traffic coming in and out?
I'm sorry.
Can you come up this way, Mr. Stratton?
When Stratton Lockrick was in business there, if you had congestion issues, you were there a long time.
Yeah, I built it in 94, we were there until 98, and that's, another two years after that. Um, we had two semis, three semis at a time, backed up the door, didn't have any troubles. We had four county drug and alcohol rehabilitation next door to the east. They had like 15 or 20 people at any time, during their meetings, and they were, um, able to do what they had to do.
You never had issues?
Not to speak of.
Okay.
But he did, he also didn't have the business on the south side, nor Little Caesar's in there at the time, and quite honestly, Circle K looks a quite bit different than it.
It does. It does look a lot different. And, um, Staff Mark, I know I still do their work, they're likely working there, and they'll have a grill or two inside, working there, and they'll have one or two people in there, maybe filling out an application. So, they'll have eight spaces for Staff Mark, it's probably double what they likely use.
And we met with them.
Yeah, we talked to them.
Yeah, they have four employees, three or four employees, and each working with somebody and maybe a spare, so they thought they needed six or seven.
At the most. At the most, right.
Yeah.
Seven, eight, we're in a ballpark. But we never seemed to have any troubles with it. So, I, I feel good about, you know, going forward with it.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Appreciate that, Penny.
Amy, as, as an owner, you're gonna come up with this issue, whoever you put in there, correct?
Yeah, based on zoning code, yeah, you're gonna have this issue no matter what, unless it's a lower-use facility, right?
Yeah, I mean, at one point, it was a little over a year ago, we had all three units filled, and we didn't seem to be getting, and, and they were parking perpendicular at that time. Um, and I don't think we were getting any complaints or anything at that point, so, yeah. Did that answer the question? Okay.
Okay. Mr. Arden?
I'm sorry, I have one more question. Obviously, I don't represent the rest of the county, but for the wholesale buyers outside of Bryan, Ohio, all the rest of the communities, do you make a commitment to deliver to them for a $10 fee as well? So, we're talking Ederton, Eaton, Pioneer, West Union?
That's what we charge for delivery, yes.
Okay. So, county-wise?
It's just to cover the gas and, you know, distances.
Okay.
Can I, can I ask? Mr.?
Sorry.
Mr. Brandt, would you mind just kind of coming up here? Is there any concern on the utility side electric department for that semi? Have you looked at it at all before now? Sorry to put you on the spot, thank you.
No, it's okay. Adam Brandt, we do have a large sixty-nine KB utility pole in that area. I haven't really put my eyes on to see exactly what concern that would be. But I believe gas also has a fenced-in area right there, like you guys pointed out, so. A little bit of concern. I mean, it's just for location, like Brian said, as far as backing in and out of there, but.
You'd struggle backing a bucket truck and a full trailer in there. Like I'd struggle backing a semi. And I can do it, probably, but I don't want that. Blindside backing in is the worst thing.
Right.
When you're heading west and back into the east. If you were heading the other direction, it'd be fine, but better, not fine, better.
Correct. You wouldn't be able to see behind you hardly, so.
On that point, I mean, I think again, from a solution perspective, could we put a cement pole or some type of reinforced pole to protect those lines is, is one, one consideration?
Okay. We could talk to respective utility owners and see if they have, have concerns about that, absolutely. Fire Department, do you have any concerns you need to add or questions?
Chief's out in the hall.
Okay, that's fair, that's fair. Utilities, Eric, do you have anything further? Anybody else have any questions, comments, concerns from the crowd? Landing Commission, do we have any further questions or comments?
I would like to note, notices were sent out, two-hundred-and-fifty-foot radius. I only received one email from a lady just clarifying what the meeting was about. Never heard anything back. You all should've got a letter from the six business owners that we referenced several times today opposing this location, so those are the only few things that I wanted to add.
Which I do think we do need to kind of consider the fact that they didn't know delivery was an option, probably, were they?
Right, that, that does make a difference. I, I think the number of vehicles will be lesser. That's why I asked Reese if they, you know, maybe partake in delivery. And Muppler Moose may partake in and pretend how they're due potentially. Don't know, it's hard to say. That may reduce some vehicle traffic in there. Well, questions, comments, concerns, or?
Should we know if we're looking at redoing the sewer there?
Uh, it'd be north of there. It won't be through the parking lot.
No, well, the manhole's gonna be about right there.
We're gonna have construction next summer along the west side of your building. We're gonna repair a sewer line that's in the, what used to be the alleyway there. There's utilities not through there, so we will have more construction, maybe for a week. We'll be disrupting in there, so.
So the vacuum in the air might actually be on back on Circle K's property when we get done there.
Because it may be right on top of our sewer line.
Yes.
I guess, uh, Helen and Malick?
Did Rite Aid Corporate, or Rite Aid Circle K Corporate ever respond to anything? So we don't have any idea what their feelings are?
No, sir.
One way or the other?
We let them know we've got a project, that we wanna be good neighbor, wanna reach out to them, and no, no callbacks, so.
And they would've gotten a letter to?
Four phone calls.
Right.
That I personally made. And then we also went, walked over, I walked over and Malik walked over and talked to a manager as well.
Some concerns I had early on was, I had assumed your delivery, not your deliveries, your wholesale would be distributed through the rear of the building. So when Andrew and I went out there and walked the site a few weeks ago, we're scratching our head thinking, how is this gonna work with people trying to park in these little spots? Somebody's gonna pull in, walk to the back door, they're gonna come out and the free delay truck's gonna have them blocked in. I think you've answered that concern with me now because you're saying your delivery's about the front door with a, with a handcart that's taken care of and you'll try and get your four or five employees to park in those back spots there that could conceivably get blocked in. So to me, I feel better about that. I know your state liquor truck will be coming at six AM and I agree with Mrs. Maynor that other trucks can come whenever. I know you can, you can make those, like, at the ice house in the morning, I see your truck there at seven or seven fifteen in the morning. I'll see another truck there eleven, eleven, late in the morning or early afternoon. So, yeah, I know you can have some control over, but I do feel a little better about the parking if you can direct most of the employees to park over there on the west side. I know that helps mine up a notch.
And to clarify, the deliveries are once a week, right? For once every two weeks?
Our, our liquor truck?
Yeah, the liquor truck in the state.
So I, it's either once a week or once every two weeks. I don't know how Rite Aid used to get it here. It, it just depends on the size and the volume of sales.
Wednesday night, it's Thursday morning, they're lined up to get their glands.
Yeah, that's right.
And the beer trucks? And the beer and wine is once a week?
Once a week.
Five trucks, one time a week?
Yes.
So.
Once a day?
Once a?
A half hour, one day a week.
Okay, so basically, we have, we will say, two variances here, I believe, that we're asking for. One would be a parking variance reduced from forty, and I'm gonna recommend that be to twenty-six instead of twenty-seven because you're gonna lose one parking space for any gap striking in there. So you'd be asking for a variance from forty to twenty-six. And then you're also asking for a variance on the circulation aisle on parking on the west side of the building from twenty feet down to five feet. And I know you can move those closer to the building potentially to, to less than that. I would prefer to see ten feet if possible. How much asphalt's there, Andrew? Do we know, is it twenty-seven feet?
I do not know of that.
I mean, if eighteen foot is your, is eighteen or twenty the minimum space for? It's eighteen by ten, right?
Double-sided parking, it's twenty. I believe it's reduced for one side, so it could get down to?
I was thinking it was twenty-seven feet they had.
Eighteen.
Visible there, so that would be eighteen and nine. So they could reduce it to, ask for a variance down to nine, reduction down to nine feet. I think that would work. Okay, so there's two variances on the floor. We either have more questions or we need to make a motion.
One thought that I just had. The beer and spirits truck are gonna be delivering to Circle K at the same time, right? Or are they gonna take?
Different vendors.
Half a truck?
So?
To your business and then go somewhere else and then go get another truckload and come back to?
So I don't, I don't know.
I mean, you can't answer that, but probably they'll figure that out.
They could be on the same truck and they'll just drop theirs and they'll drop ours off. But for the spirits truck, they won't, they won't have one from the state.
Yeah, yeah.
They could be, yeah. And I don't know what time Circle K receives their beer trucks and wine trucks, so.
Okay, so do we have any thoughts or suggestions either way?
I'll make a motion that we accept the variance for the parking. I think that can be accommodated. I've made several trips down in that area. And I know at certain times, Little Caesar's is very busy. Other times, hardly anyone at all is there. And the same holds true with the other businesses, so.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to allow variance reduction from forty parking spaces to twenty-six. Is there a second on that?
A second.
Okay. Andrew?
Okay, motion on the floor to accept the variance for parking space reduction from forty to twenty-six spaces. Dick?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
All right, motion carried. Parking space reduction approved, variance approved.
Sorry?
Now, we have a second variance on there to reduce the circulation aisle from twenty feet to, I guess, whatever is manageable. I think they were asking for five feet, but that really doesn't allow for a vehicle to maneuver. I think we need to see if they can get nine feet, which would be twenty-seven foot of pavement. That's just my personal opinion. You can't get a car through a five-foot aisle anyway, so I.
I think that's.
We can't grant a five-foot variance if they can't fit a car in.
Correct.
Unless they're parking scooters all through there, it's not gonna happen, so. If you were to make a motion to approve that, I would request you go to nine feet.
Okay. Is the nine feet still on their property or do they have to get an easement?
If they have, I believe, I thought Andrew and I measured and I thought they had twenty-seven feet of pavement. I could be wrong, but they will need twenty-seven feet of asphalt on their property to make this parking work. And that's just practical. I mean, eighteen foot for a parking spot and nine foot for maneuverability. It's gonna be tight, but they can make that work. Anything less than that, they can't stay on their own property.
Well, the, I mean, based on our code, isn't the required, uh, twenty feet?
For, yeah, for double circulation, correct?
Yeah, for double circula, parking on both sides.
Gotcha. I think slanted would be difficult just because there's no way to get out, right? It's not that typical lot where you could just go down an alley and get out of it. That obviously would work better in, in the maneuverability, but there's no exit for you there.
I mean, and I think we have no problem pushing the parking that way. There is quite a bit, I haven't measured it, but there is quite a bit of space.
Sixty-eighteen minutes, contract.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, I mean, I have no problem. We can expand, yeah.
But that might be on hold until we get the sewer done.
We gotta cut through, we gotta cut through. We have no reason to be repairing. So would there be a, any interest in allowing a motion to grant reduction from twenty feet to nine feet?
No objection.
So would there be a motion then?
Yes.
Jack, you have some motion?
Yes.
Is there a second on that then?
Second.
Okay.
Who's second? All right, motion on the floor to grant an aisle reduction from twenty feet down to nine feet. Jack?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Brian?
I'm actually gonna vote no because I don't feel they should do it without easement.
Rob?
Yes.
Mayor?
Um, I'm gonna take my real estate background and follow the engineer. I think that's pretty dicey without an easement, so no. Also safe because you have majorities, so it's okay. But we would encourage an easement.
All right, majority wins out, so variance was granted.
And we'll make it work.
Mayor, approach the.
Absolutely.
Okay. Look, a lot of time and thought went into this, and I know these weren't easy decisions. But we just, it means a lot to us. We just wanted to say we're really grateful for the time that Mr. Waterston, the mayor, your body has put into this. We will strive to, you know, continue to earn your trust. And we'll be happy, if you want us to come back, we'll come back and give you a progress report. But very grateful for your time, your attention. We look forward to being part of your community and adding value to your community. Thank you.
May I ask, what's the timeframe on construction and opening?
Well, I know Amy's chomping at the bit, right, to, to get us in. Right, so I think we've gotta get.
I know some of it. We just got, the day after the council meeting, a certified letter for liquor control for the state liquor agency. You had applied for a C1.
For the beer and wine.
For the beer and wine. And I assumed that was all one, and I should never assume that with the state. So at that time, the C1 council asked for a local hearing because their council meeting was last Monday. We had thirty days to respond and I did not feel comfortable with them responding until we had this zoning meeting. So I think what will probably happen is when they see the liquor, they know that this has gone through. I can't speak for them, but I'm assuming that there's gonna be a conversation about waiving that hearing. So that should not delay your process. Just so you know where it's at on the local process, they have a meeting in two weeks and it will be on their agenda for that piece.
And let us know what you, if you need us to be present, what do you need from us, or?
I, well, I think it'll be okay. You had a council member here today and they know that this recording will be made available to them too. So I just told them that they couldn't make today to get online tomorrow and they could listen to it if they have questions, so. So I think we'll probably ask the state if we can. I don't, my recommend, I'm gonna probably get on the phone with Department of Commerce and see if we can undo our first local hearing on just the beer because I don't know that it would be necessary. Because the variance doesn't go to council. They don't, now that this is approved, it's, it's done.
I'll have the minutes typed up and we can put it in the packet, too.
That'd be great, just for their reference. So I, I don't believe that there's probably a need for you to be here. If that changes in the next week or so, we'll certainly reach out.
Thank you very much.
Sound good?
Thank you for the opportunity to be here today.
Absolutely. Andrew, do you have any other questions?
Yeah, question. We got architect, engineer hired to do building plans, just minor stuff.
Minor stuff. I, I was gonna look for somebody local. I assume we were waiting for all of that until this was over just because it's, you know, the only, I contacted someone local just about the back, some mans, you know, just to start getting quotes. And I'm gonna actually call him now to talk about expanding the parking lots.
Okay. He needs to meet with one of us out there. Andrew and I are both, we've been out there with the contractor prior.
Oh, okay.
And we could have, have the same conversation with them we had before, so, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. That's perfect.
Look, well, I'll work with you guys then and.
Wonderful.
Get this process going.
Thank you.
Andrew, do you have any other items for the commission? Any items potentially for agenda for next month as of now?
As of right now, I do, do not believe so.